Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Health Meeting. Tuesday, August 26th. We are at Old Town Hall, 111 Sunset Avenue. This is a public meeting and we are also remote participation. Zoom meeting. Zoom meeting number 884-0104-3350. Zoom meeting passcode 708-76-70, sorry. And Zoom dialing number 1929205-6099. Tonight, we have a full board of attendants with member Mr. Bernado, Mr. Tanis, and myself, Mr. Fires, along with our health agent, Mr. Pillin, and our office manager, Mrs. Glasser. And we get out one participant on our Zoom tonight. Melissa St. Laurent. That being said, we'll call the meeting to order. And if everyone would... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. I'm thinking, I'm going to, with Melissa's objection, move public input prior to 3A. Have we got an motion to do that? So, more than second. Motion made. May then second is to move item number four, public input, as a next order of business. Okay, Melissa, we're gonna get to you now so we can... You can go out in about a day.
Thank you so, so much. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, gentlemen. So, as most of you on the board know, I've had a serious septic situation at my house going for the last few months, along with many serious housing situations. Todd and Kevin have had to come out to the property. Kevin came out once. Todd has had to be out numerous times. The only problem that I have is I don't feel that I have enough accessibility. So, tonight, case in point, well, today, Todd had to come out earlier today to inspect my D-box. He couldn't find it, so he had to wait for the installer to come back out again, dig up the D-box for him, found out the D-D box is not at the correct location. So, Todd came back out at 4:30, just a little while ago. And now, because town hall's closed tomorrow, I now have to wait for the installer to fix that and then wait for Todd to be able to come out again. So, it just, with limited hours being in the, as the Board of Health agent, as we've all seen with the COVID, and now losing a town nurse, I just didn't, I wanted to kind of let you guys know that as a resident, I know I've needed a lot more than normal in the past 12 years that I've lived here. But I just feel like I'm putting a burden on him, number one, with just the amount that I need him, which I'm not getting enough of. And then it's kind of lacking on other residents as well, if that makes sense.
I have a quick question. So, for the, for the, just to take it from you, the D-box, what was the plan for moving forward?
So, I called the installer. The installer has to raise the cover up to be even six inches to finish grade before I can sign this certificate of compliance. So, the installer knows that. But I let Mrs. Sinhar know that all the other work isn't compliant. That's the only little bit that's left.
Yeah, so it's all functional and stuff?
Well, everything's, yes.
So, it's more just a, just to tidy it up?
Yes.
Correct. So, what happened also is that the final payment that is due to the installer, and then there are other people within that that fell underneath the installer that are waiting to be paid as well. And none of them get paid until that final payment is done when we get that certificate from the Board of Health. So, nothing negative. I know I've had my issues before. I have a little bit of heated because it was, you know, frustrating process for me. And I, I'm just saying, as far as a resident, I think, I don't know if there's a way to add, I know the budget is tight. Add more help to that office or I just don't know. So, I just wanted to tell you, as far as a resident and what I've been experiencing, they've come out pretty much every time that I've needed them. And, you know, I still have severe ongoing issues right now that Todd's gonna have to come back out again to. Never mind the septic.
Yeah, so there's, there's an apartment here also. And given the nature of the situation, I give myself a phone number to both the owner and the tenant so that they can contact me. And they've both been very good about it and just very, you know, factual and all that. And say, this happened today or this, you know, it hasn't been a study, you know, nobody's abusing it. But I needed it because there had to be things that had to be complied with in a timely manner. And of course, I'm not here most of the time. So, it was the only way to get it done.
Yeah, so Melissa, I, I agree with you in regards to increasing hours for our health agent. And we've actually talked about that in the past. And that's still a conversation that we're having. So, we've actually talked about these 28 hours now. Everyone knows that. And we've, we've talked about increasing those hours. And obviously, that comes with hopefully pay increase. So, those are in the works. And if you have, so I'm gonna talk to the selectman or whoever, that would now actually help us. Thank you.
Absolutely. Because like I said, I just know for me, I've, most people on the board here sitting in this room have spent a lot of time with me over the last couple of months. And I do truly appreciate you and apologize for all my frustration. So, it's been a rough time, but I do appreciate all the help that you guys have given me. And like Todd was saying, he did have to give his cell phone number because with this septic system and the housing going on, there were times water needed to be shut off and versus him get a call later on saying the landlord shut the water off. It was something that he was able to relay immediately to say, hey, the septic portion's being done. This step needs to be taken or, you know. So, there were certain emergency situations that we needed Todd immediately versus trying to have to call town hall if Roz is there or on lunch, waiting for that, then for to contact Todd. So, I, I really just appreciate you guys even giving me the opportunity to speak tonight and just letting you know from a resident standpoint, I've taken a lot of hours and I, I'm sorry. But I'm sure I'm not the only resident in Dayton taking many hours.
Thank you for your kind words.
Yeah, thank you so much, Melissa and strong fires. I'm very happy to hear that we had a satisfactory ending or very close to a satisfactory ending. And the best thing you can do for the Board of Health as far as any increase in hours or salary wages and what we do would be to yourself and as many people as you can bring with you is town, special town meeting is November 1st. The audit was coming up for additional hours at that meeting. The best you can do for us is go there and vote in favor of the increase of the budget. Okay, that was all I will say.
Yep. I'm very much in favor. Like I said, I know I've used a lot of those 28 in the last few weeks. I think we have a six-page report just for one issue. So, it does take a lot of extra effort. And I do appreciate the board and all that you've done for me.
Thank you.
We are in as-built, you know, proper system?
We didn't receive an as-built. There were a couple typos on the plan that I need to talk with the engineer and confirm. So, it won't be until Monday. Because he's on vacation this weekend, he may even call it now. So, but I told her, everything is functional. Everything's good. The installer ends up once it rises to grade, she's good. And we can just clean it up with the engineer.
Oh, yes, we're close.
Yeah, Melissa, I mean, and I know that your old system, we've had discussions before, you know, and some issues there. And I know Todd and his workers in general, everybody, well, it's the street the same and the systems all get treated the same as far as making sure they're all to not only DEPs code, but, you know, our local regs too. So, I know it can be frustrating sometimes, you know, gee, you know, the D-boxes, you know, I gotta wait, you know, a little while longer because something wasn't quite right. But, you know, it's just to make sure that everything is 100%. So, I appreciate your, your being understanding on that part. And I'm sure as soon as the installer gets that spread away and, you know, Todd's happy and we get that revised as well, I'm sure Todd will get that squared away real quick for you.
Absolutely. And I'll tell you, I actually appreciate the fact that it's got to be fixed. Because my old system in the backyard, when we first found the problem, it was about five feet deep. And we hand dug it up to try to locate the system. So, I'm glad that Todd came out, caught it, and is having it corrected. So, just so you know that that is not, I am not upset about that at all. That is actually something I'm extremely happy with. So, I want this system to be till I move out of this house, maybe way down the line. I don't want another system. But no, I definitely appreciate that he does the extra and really truly makes the installers do what code regulations are because it protects homeowners like me from the old system. Like I said, five feet deep. That was way too deep to have a D-box. And to be out there hand digging it was... So, I'm glad it'll be six inches.
Very good. It'll be all set?
Yeah.
We are. Thank you again. I appreciate you all. And I will be at that town meeting 100% supporting you all.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item number one, and can you read the order of business? Item number 3A. You discuss a nap, town nurse resignation. In fact, eventually you'll have a letter. Or first time I've seen it, I know she resigned as, will be resigning on September 9th, 2021. To the deputy Board of Health. Dear Board of Health, please accept this letter as formal notice of my resignation from my position as a public health nurse for the town of Dyke. My last day of employment will be September 9th, 2021. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to work for the town for the past two years. I have enjoyed working here and appreciate all the opportunities you have given me. Todd and Rozalyn have been wonderful to work with. Unfortunately, this has been a difficult year and a year and a half with COVID, which has increased the number of hours needed to complete the job. I would like to do what I can to help with this transition, including wrapping up my current cases and training any staff. If I can be of any other assistance during this time, please let me know. Thank you again for the opportunity. And I wish you all the best for the future. Laurie did a wonderful job for the town. They said, unfortunately, the last year and a half has been tough. She works full-time for one town and part-time in three other towns. Keeping up with infectious diseases in these communities and requiring as necessary on the state website. And once COVID came, it just became nearly impossible to do this job. And with it coming back again, it's starting to be the same thing all over again. So, I, I appreciate the work she did and she's gonna be missed by us. So, anybody else?
Yeah, I just want to say the same. I work with Laurie through the past. I've worked with her in Lakeville, Landfree County, and here. She's just an amazing person and employee. I know I spoke to her. She was very conflicted. She wanted to stay here, but it just, just, she can't do the work. It's 20 hours. So, we're gonna miss her. And I'm glad to see that she's gonna help us through this transition. And we actually have our staff trained as well in bathing. So, maybe we could talk about that and see if we go forward.
Mr. Tanis, would you like to say something nice?
What's, it's just, it's been great. It's unfortunate. COVID's been tough for all of the public health staff, but especially the nursing staff. I just continue to see more and more public health nurses posting available mainly because the pay and number of hours has been extremely difficult for everybody. So, I get where he's coming from. And it's sad to see her go and it's unfortunate. But we understand. To add to it, it's not just COVID. On top of COVID, all the other communicable disease illnesses continue and all still need to be followed up on, which that's the normal task and it's the normal duties. So, had COVID on top of that, now it increased again. I completely understand with, with the resignation with everything else that's going on. It's unfortunate and it'll be tough to replace her.
Thank you. Thank you, David.
Yeah, I, I want to echo that. She was great to work with. We started every morning during the rough times. We'd call with her and we usually laughed a little bit. It was a good way to help us through. She wanted to quit, what was it, last October? Because the workload was too much. And that's when we stepped in to help. And then she was just there to help us. She wasn't actually talking to us. In case, there were a couple people who didn't have to call for us. But we did the bulk of the work. And that was, they kept her another year, which was great. Because say finally, you know, a year ago would have been impossible. So, but yeah, I, I really enjoyed working with her. And I miss her.
Yes, I have the same feelings. Laurie was wonderful. She was a great teacher. She was a consultant and advisor. She was wonderful. She was there whenever we needed her, whether it be a text or call, any case that, or cluster that we had concerns about, she stepped in. And she was wonderful the other way around. I miss her.
Thanks, everybody. That being said, we move on. Next title, well, it's still the same item. We will be having to advertise for another part-time public health nurse by using the same per diem structure with $55 an hour. Rozalyn did send us three job descriptions. One from Time, one from North Andover. And with Rockland was the other one, I believe.
Everyone went up, I'm sorry, everyone went up on time for Rockland.
I asked Laurie and she didn't have a COVID thing. And I wasn't familiar with her job. But Tom did actually a really good job, did so.
I took the time one. And for what we're looking for, and Todd probably has a full-time nurse. We're looking for someone that just had a career for diseases and updated the mating system. Did you get a copy of the document when I advised? If you guys want to look at that. Just take a minute with the others also. Yeah, I took about, I don't know, probably about 25% of what Tom's was. Even had a few things. We'll give you a few minutes for that. And do you have any comments?
I looked at it quick and I didn't know if we should add something about, like, her being part of the ICS structure with, like, Dan and...
Oh, she should have, yes.
That was in one of these jobs.
Because we do have Denise, who's integral, but it would be great if we had a backup.
It's on the Rockland one, on the very top of page two. He's trained in and familiar with the new 700, ICS 100 to 300, familiar with EBS, and it works to see compared to many exercises. But that just means strength. But obviously, we can't expect her. She's only given us a few hours a month to be there when we have, she's in other towns, now she's in public law. If everybody had a disaster at the same time, she couldn't be here because she had to be other places.
I just, now that you mention that, probably dissipates or goes to the monthly coalition meetings.
Coalition meeting, some days, all three plus hours. That's, that's a considerable, that's, under normal times, it could be the entire, you know, week or two worth of time.
Yeah, I hear.
Depending on the season, you know.
Beth Collins used to go monthly. And I think everybody was surprised for the time spent at the meetings.
It was much quieter in town.
Well, yeah, it all depends what's going on.
That's pretty much what she did with the meetings.
Is this, is this still doing?
It's still the most. We were gonna go back to number one, but stay in the middle.
I mean, obviously, I've had a minimum too. So, but yes, it would be helpful for nurses at those meetings. But if she's working for four different towns, like, they should, you know, they should all...
Maybe this one doesn't have that many.
You don't know.
Yeah.
I think that's gonna be a problem right now.
35 an hour, right now with COVID? Good luck.
Yeah, I'm just gonna say that. We're gonna have to do it.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Which one was it?
Last, last summer. All right, Tom, we started 35 and ended up over 50 and had to hire three because one wasn't going to be able to cut it. And we couldn't get anybody at 35.
It's, it's sharp minded, but...
You can normalize our monthly time. But we need to deal with...
It might be good for a retiree. Somebody who's, which Beth Collins was at the time. But the one from North Andover with the hiring range of $50,000, $732, for 30 hours, the minimum wage, that came out to 32 and change. So, they're probably not gonna get you for it.
But that gave them the benefits too. I was starting on...
What's our budget from this point on?
35, it's like $100 a year.
I was starting, I mean, most, I mean, given COVID times, it's just, I would have gone with 71.
She population, negotiable, depending on experience. I was gonna check where we are to be.
If you go with the max out, you know, the one that's almost 45. I can tell you that I'm gonna fill out for $50,000. This is a benefit.
Same goes for all cases.
Yeah.
It is, it is really tough to get someone for 35. Women, 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 because that was the same thing, right?
She did, yes. Normal times, the average hours is what?
It was like two to three a month.
Yeah, so it's not a whole lot of hours.
Populations increasing, which is more...
Oh, so that came out at the last select meeting. Our account. Tom Parker reported on the census. And Dyke, in the last 10 years, has grown 1,000. So, population went from 7,000 to 8,000 in the last 10 years. And it was one of the top... Does it get to the executives?
8,101, we have to go to another precinct.
I've seen an absolute sploof in sickborn illnesses and not just standard line. It's a really bizarre sickborn illnesses that really haven't been seen or seen much around here. All of those are communicable diseases that the line doesn't have to be followed upon at two quarters, it's not followed upon. But all the other ones are. So, you know, from even a couple of years ago, just the sheer number of cases, I don't see Dyke committing. But seen, seen the two towns I handle, even though the last two years, it has increased significantly.
I think, right, I shall say, nine cases of other than COVID. And for a year, there's a lot. So, to do it all at once is...
In a month.
Yeah.
About foodborne illnesses and everything else in between, the highest, the highest cases.
So, this, this one doesn't have a COVID? The one I did? Yes, it does.
It's just blended in with the maiden.
Okay.
Just fall under it.
Yeah, so as long as we, as long as I mentioned, or Roz has mentioned, to be part of that.
It would be good to be part of the, the planning of it. But like Todd said, if she's only a few hours a week here, we can't expect her to come in the event of emergency.
Yeah, but when we have our drill, she can... If you remember, when I was in Lakeville, I came out here as a volunteer.
Yep.
So, I was listed as a volunteer, even though I'm a member. Because when I was in Lakeville, I was there, I was part of the team. So, I mean, we could have her just do the maiden in maybe a clinic and communicable diseases.
And this was everything outside of COVID? That's 55.
But...
Starting running forward. I mean, even, even VNA's that communities had contracts with, the VNA's were coming back after, start of COVID, the first couple of months of COVID and said, we can't sign the contract. This is, this is far exceeds what we can even handle and drop, you know, communities were dropping towns off the right. And there's, there's VNA's, numerous nurses. And we're getting, you know, that contractor, you know, over $100 an hour, $150 an hour. So, I think, again, for normal amount of related things, I think this is fine.
You would say you can't miss this in COVID related.
I'd probably drop a line in there that, but then, I mean, now we're, we're... But Tom and Roz, you know, here we are. And I don't know what's going on with that, with the extra hours and money to, you know, COVID's coming back again. Are you gonna be able to assist? I don't know. You know, this is kind of...
So, just seeing the way it looks like when we left it at the last meeting is, we brought up and said, hey, the nurses are gonna quit unless we can step in and help. They felt that...
Tennis floors was on?
They wanted to hear from the tennis floor? No, they wanted, they wanted, until we get into the red, which is 25 cases in two weeks. At that point in time, they were gonna have another meeting to discuss it. But we, we asked that they allow Mike Mull, the town administrator, to be able to authorize us at a certain point that they wanted to have another meeting in order to do it. So, right now, we're not authorized to do the contact tracing.
I thought it'd be destiny where the, the board here this evening could authorize you...
Well, so, the selectman has to do it. But if this board determines that there's a public health need for us to be doing it because the nurse isn't doing it and CTC's not doing it, then yes, this board could ask us to step in and do the contact tracing until CTC's available or until we get a new nurse or until the pandemic or whatever you guys want. I'll tell you personally, I don't want to do what we did before. That was too much. And I know you and Magnum sending a bunch to CTC, but I, I think we'd have to do the same thing here. I don't think I can handle that many cases again.
The problem, the problem is, CTC was slated to cease operations next week. The state, we likely extended that contract through an unofficial date, but some point in the end of November or December. So, what happens after that? I don't know. So, at this point, we can't drive on CTC. They've been extremely unreliable with reaching out to cases and contacts because of basically, in June, early June, COVID was virtually non-existent for, what, six weeks or so? So, the CTC laid off a huge amount of the staff. And all of a sudden, I know where ramps up to levels that we had in January, February. And now they're quickly scrambling to try and get staff to come back. I think now they're, they're staffed to the level that they can start to handle cases moving forward. But again, what's gonna happen?
Yeah, right after the next couple of months.
Right. You know, they're slated to now stop, cease their operations right in time for the holidays, which you, you especially don't. This was ridiculous as far as cases. I was giving Christmas Day, 26 new cases in one day.
Yeah, right after Thanksgiving, just kind of...
Yeah. So, I don't know. To put the nurse physician out without anything COVID related, I think is not appropriate. But I don't know.
Yeah, but as long as you mentioned, there may be, when you sit down, there may be related duties. But hopefully, we have these other buffers. Maybe we have CTC or whatever. And hopefully, miraculously, this just ends suddenly.
I don't believe that we're gonna get the authority to continue doing these on CTC operations, even though it's CARES running. And I can see where Tom and Roz are coming from, but...
I think CARES are...
All these hours and so forth.
It's December 31st of the feds, but I think the state made it like October 31st or something like that. So, it's, or October 1st. It's not very much longer yet.
You know, I don't know how you're supposed to do your job without authority to do what you need to do.
authority to do what you need to do and spend the money and do it, you know, so.
So we have, we have an issue, I, I see an issue that if now we start having Todd Ross back doing contact tracing and all this COVID stuff, uh, now, regular work's not gonna get done again, like, yeah.
Until November, and that's the additional time, it's approved at town meeting.
Well, this would all have to be over a regular workday, and not that we wouldn't make some calls during the day, but we would still put in our regular hours for the board of health and any contact tracing would be over and above, but CARES does pay for the the over and above.
Any COVID related is gonna be on overtime anyway? Matt, from your experience, you know, what's, what's expected? Is, is, is it just give all the cases to C T C, or is it you give some to your nurse?
I don't have a nurse. Go ahead, Matt.
Okay.
He's also leaving control.
You hand everything over to that.
So, from COVID here, um, I, the state might come out realizing that there's a huge gap in assistance. So they come out, it was, it wasn't C T C the other time, it was early year, but originally, we were gonna send, like, nursing and public health students to volunteer, if you will, minimum pay, the state's gonna pick up, to different health departments that needed help. And they would help with the contact tracing and case management. Then I think they very quickly, within a week, realized that wasn't gonna work, right? So then they came out with a project red code or something like that, code red, I don't remember what, what the exact name was, um, I jumped on that immediately, and that was the early C T C. Uh, I think there were six communities that jumped on it, we were one of them. Um, that was very flawed, very problematic, uh, I won't even send a couple of stuff.
Those news.
Yeah, uh, and then they quickly transitioned that to the C T C, which we started to utilize, the first couple of weeks was very rough, very rough. Um, and then they started fine-tuning it, uh, pretty much still kept the cases I was sending to them, just that they were lapsed. Um, but then regular work had to start to continue, or continue, we were getting complaints here following the COVID regulations, things like that, so, um, then I transitioned to, I was managing any cases that were, you know, long-term care, hunger care, centers, uh, schools, and in town buildings, anything that was a little more sensitive, said it was general public, so general public got sent, because I just, I, I wasn't doing more staff, there was just so much I could do. Um, that's how it continued through. So, um, C T C is, is failing, so.
Yeah. I'm just thinking of us, if the nurse, the future nurse, um, is, understands that some work may be involved, which is just mostly monitoring or whatever it is, possibly make a call, but if we have them do the charging, but not them, we need to see.
So, when you said it, if you can pull a reporting up and see kind of what's being done, where their status is, um, I try to stay on top of the book, and if something seems like it's not being followed upon, I'll pull it myself, um.
See, something like that, they're, they're.
Yeah, I don't like a lot of overlap, um, but, I was fortunate too, that anything related to the schools, the school nurses were incredibly helpful. Uh, and they're actually, I shouldn't say they're involved, uh, late March and April, and early May, the school nurses, the schools were essentially closed out. They volunteered at the time to help, which is huge, you know, just, maybe there's the, the contact side thing, uh, contact tracing, but, um, yeah, it was continued, you know, so.
You were lucky to get to school.
Everything's, everything's gonna learn in the curve, and everything keeps changing. Um, I truly believe that at this point, we weren't even gonna be doing contact tracing anymore, we still are, so.
Okay, so what are we gonna do about those nurses? Um, well, I'm looking at this one, investigation reports, case in other use, self-impacted cases of child.
Yeah, we probably don't need that one, right?
No, because we, we have our resources, you know, we went into a housing case called, first of all, there's a, children's services.
I mean, put it out, put it out as it is, see if we got any interest in working, or you don't have to try.
Or take out the mental health issue, what? I hope this sees services of residents in the, including meals on wheels.
You know, we have meals on wheels.
Um, home medical visits, I know of somebody with different homes, you don't have to go to visit, or. I don't know, is it?
Can you put up that one? Just tell them that.
Well, so Kevin, you asked how much money, we have three thousand dollars in the account for the year, she was three hundred dollars in July and four hundred dollars in August, we have twenty-three hundred dollars left in the nurse budget right now. And CARES hasn't paid for any of that, so that's our, our, our budget.
So something obviously, so if we do hire somebody, hopefully, and then in December, we're gonna look at other budgets, we can see where we're at, because it might go over, obviously. Well, this budget has to be in, if we're gonna choose a different dollar amount, we don't know where this is gonna go at this point. They'll have to do a transfer from the reserve fund or something later in the year, depending on what happens. Um, I mean, Lori went way over last year, but, uh, it wasn't paid for, correct?
No, CARES covered it all.
Okay, it's paid for?
CARES covered it all.
Oh, good, alright.
It's, it was my time, between twenty and thirty-five hours with, because all Ross's overtime and my overtime was paid for, it was my additional hours was the only problem.
Yeah, I, I would just strike the, the other use of these cases, because that's the, the state invested all this, you know, those, and, um, the coroner departmental health crisis team, uh, and the police usually, you know, to usually get caught that, you know.
Yeah, certainly.
Actually, but those two can be struck, I don't think that, you're not gonna call the nurse, you know, for a crisis, you know, that's, that's not really. I think those two would be all, other than that, I don't have any problem with it, um, I would just, that's what they're, they should be.
Do we need to.
I just post it, see what happens, and see what happens, if we get people to buy on it, we can kind of talk. If people buy, maybe, maybe we'll talk to them, get their feelings, and, you know, just kind of say, hey, this is where we're, we're in a state of unknown with COVID, and see what they'd be comfortable with, and see if we can, you know, if we get somebody we like, and see if, everything can.
Where, where are we posting this, M M A?
Drop it major way.
Well, I think, uh, we've worked with the town administrator on that, but I would assume you could drop it everywhere.
Yeah, somewhat of a better, uh.
Even the town page and.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't think it's gonna go in the newspaper, but there's enough boards to post it on.
Yeah, but it's, you know, the authority to set the wage.
Oh, it's thirty-five an hour, is it, or is it that?
Yeah, this was what the other, that one was, uh.
See, see what happens?
Now, we just recommend to the selectmen that they post this, or we posting it, how does this work?
Well, we're gonna post it.
Okay.
I mean, while I'm like, one of us will work, like.
I just didn't know if we recommended to the selectmen.
Once it's finalized, we're gonna send it over to Mike for his approval, also that, yes, okay.
Are we adding in contact tracing? I'm sorry, we've been kind of back.
I, I, I mean, that's kind of, that's made.
Yeah, please, please, let's cover it under the view, and then, like I said, it's probably getting out of line, right, if you're.
Okay.
Because it's in the, they're striking that article, it's in maiden, so.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, no, I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
I don't know what you said, I didn't have, it was all this COVID stuff.
At the time, I think it was pretty easy to work with, and then, so we don't, there was a lot more, and we don't need this stuff, so, it's, uh. So other than the two clauses there, we're set, we're just talking, what?
I would say so.
amended for Dyton? Okay.
All right, we'll make the edits and we'll get it.
You know, maybe just a couple of additives, I think it was pretty complete.
Yes.
I did that, it was.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Alright. We're gonna move on, and we're all set with that, everyone?
Yes. To approve the job description, probably.
Yeah.
With the edits discussed.
As amended, as.
Because we don't have a job description in our second.
I'll make that motion, then we approve the job description, yeah, as we discussed.
Second.
Okay, motion made second, any further discussion? Seeing none, I was a bit, I, I suppose, motion Paris, I mean, I also wanna um, moving on to three B, will you discuss an act, special Tommy Warren? Uh, unless anybody's got any others, I, I came up with two that we will be needing. Uh, first one was a transfer of funds into the hazmat account to, uh, to host another household hazard displacement, and the other one at this time is an unknown amount to additionally fund, uh, personnel expenses, salary, health agent, uh, due to a proposed increase in weekly work hours, going from twenty-eight to thirty-five. Um, no wage increase at this time.
So, yeah, just so you know, we sat down with the town administrator, and one of the selectmen has to be a talk of the select meeting, to talk about where we're gonna go, and then we'll get into the executive session or something, but, right now, the current proposal is additional hours without additional pay. And, and then we can talk about it for the annual town meeting for an increase in pay.
Okay.
Does that, that explain it right?
Pretty much, yeah, um, after a lengthy discussion, which, as far as wages, probably should be done in the executive session since, uh.
What's on your agenda to talk about?
But we're not, there was no movement on wage increase, and there will be no movement until the annual town meeting. Uh, but all felt that increase in hours is definitely warranted. There were a few other things discussed, to supplement this, that are already in the budget, without budget increases, and those are a possibility, I guess, um. But for now, uh, the dollar amount that we're gonna be putting in here is just to increase from twenty-eight to thirty-five hours a week.
So it's seven hours, and you said from the November first meeting to June thirtieth, there's thirty-four weeks and change? And multiply times my hourly rate, you're at eighty-eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars, I think that was, that was the number.
Well, that could be wrong, I mean, I would, we need confirmation on that before we go around, solve number, roughly, around, right around nine dollars.
Yeah, I, I did the math myself, we came to the same number you did, so.
Oh, did you?
I did, so, right, but I don't think we should go eighty-eight sixty-seven, I think we should round it to a, a number a little bit higher than that, just to make it.
Now, with those hours, are we gonna talk about this, yeah, are those hours known for some more loony's and other duties?
There was no separation of duty.
Okay, so.
I, it would be up to me to prioritize and.
Hopefully prioritize, yes. Don't get pulled out in the weeds, and that's almost it, um. Yeah, there's, uh. Yeah, mine.
Executive session, so, at the point, yes, some amount, a minimum of eighty-eight sixty-seven would cover that.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I think, that motion, yeah, we can approve. Uh, and I'm gonna read it, as I think it should be approved for tonight's meeting. To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, the amount necessary to additionally fund the count, blah, 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 personnel expenses, salary, health agent, due to a proposed increase in weekly work hours from twenty-eight to thirty-five hours. That's how I think we should, uh, vote on this motion tonight. So, and, you agree?
Yeah, I mean, it can always be amended on the town meeting floor, because it's not, I mean, it's, but.
But you need a dollar figure to put with it.
Yeah, if you don't, but, at least put an article in, that's your S O L, so at least get something in, it's a placeholder, you can write behind it on the town meeting floor.
Yeah, I think we would say for nine thousand, so, I mean, they won't find it yet.
I ground, I ground up.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd rather go with a no one dollar, I'd say I got two cents of it, I don't know, two.
No, just, uh, round up, I think it's fine.
So, nine, ninety-five.
Let's save it, man, was it, was it one dollars last?
It's like giving nine forty-five, you got about eighty-eight sixty-seven, so.
This week, it'd be even nine thousand. It's a hundred dollars. Yeah, I don't think.
It's if you want, the, the point two of a week or whatever.
Yeah, it was thirty-four weeks and two days between November second and June thirty, and, uh, after we both figured it out, came pretty close, so I think nine thousand's a good number, okay, so we have two motions, first one will be oh, I didn't send you to the cloud, you did it, okay, I'm sorry. Um, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds, the amount of twelve thousand dollars to additionally fund the count, zero one zero four three three zero 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 seventy five two nine five hazmat disposal, but purpose holding, and also hazard displacement. Um, last year, I conceded ten thousand, and as you came to ten thousand four, and we reached ten thousand, you came to ask me if you wanted to cut it off, and there was probably still thirty or forty thousand line, and I said, well, you go tell people. So, uh, we went over budget, actually, we only had eight thousand, I think.
Do like it was nine.
Anyway, we went over budget, there was no way I was telling them to stop, you know, when we reached that amount, so twelve thousand, I think, should be safe. Uh, the second one would be a motion to see if the town vote to transfer from available funds, the amount of nine thousand dollars to additionally fund the count, zero one zero dash zero dash five ten dash zero 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 dash five zero dash five one zero six, personnel expenses, salary, health agent, who propose increase in weekly work hours. That's the two, unless it, we can, there's something else we wanna. There's possibly one more, I just don't know how it works, I don't know when they do the wage study for Ross. When does that come out? The only reason I say that, because obviously, we talk about contact tracing, maybe maiden stuff, which is training, if we're changing the duties, if they're going to look at, uh, increases, and then would we, we wanna be ready to have that money in there?
So, that would be. It's not like you have a time, you know, something changes between now and then, she'll just get retro.
Okay. My guess is she's not gonna be the only person that's gonna need an adjustment.
So they would just adjust it?
Yeah, then they'll just do a retro, hey, whenever it's agreed on.
I guess that's it then, I don't have anything else. Thought about maybe putting more money for town nurse, now that we know where we're at, but I don't know what to put now either, so, it's, it's all up in the air, that's. We have enough budget, there's no COVID, but we know that's not gonna happen. How much should we overlap?
On her, several thousand dollars.
Okay, but we level funded prior to that, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Because she, she can show them the trend, saying, hey, we've been, we've been in good faith, level funding, but obviously, it's not working. So then, it just shows us that we're trying, but. I'll keep my opinion to myself at this point. How about these two town meeting warrant articles, will we act on those?
Uh, make a motion, the two articles as presented.
Second. Motion made seconded, although it was in the days of the two R and R, close, I.
I.
You.
I.
Motion Paris, what do we do coming up?
So we're running out of time on that, so the last thing we'd like to, for rescheduling those meetings, was, um, that Ross and I would reach out to you individually, get dates, and then figure out a date when it would work, so, if you wanna try and do that again, or you wanna try and sit down with the calendar now, but I know you only got like five minutes left, so.
You can do it with everybody here, it's coming.
Um, yeah, because we scheduled, um, no public input, nobody's here unless somebody wants to bring something up. Um, the executive session scheduled for this evening, uh, was canceled, um, at this point, so.
One of the two, yeah.
One of the two.
One of the two, yeah, one of the two.
Um, Mr. Chairman, we go into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, chapter thirty eight, section twenty one eighty two, the conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations, non-personal or conduct. Selective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations, negotiations, non-personal, one, uh, health agent job, responsibilities and contracts.
And we will not be coming back, correct, we will not be returning to, uh, normal session.
Second. Okay, motion is made and seconded, excuse me, to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, chapter thirty eight. Section twenty one eighty two, and this board will not be returning to open session. So good evening, everyone. And I will see you on September ninth.